All right, I hereby call the Rockport Select Board Meeting for October 15th, 2019, to order. And we have the board, we're all here. And the first thing on the agenda is Town Manager's Report/Update.
Thank you. In your materials, you'll notice that we had a meeting on regional planning with the... All of Knox County towns were invited to attend the County Commission's Hearing Room. Midcoast Regional Planning Commission has voted to dissolve, and there'll be a formal vote of that in November. And it appears that MCD, which is the Midcoast Economic Development District, is poised to pick up the planning, regional planning, for all of the towns in the county. Very beneficial, be very beneficial for all the towns in the county. The largest ones in the county already are members anyway. What this means for us is that we will no longer have to pay our annual dues, if you will, to MCD, but it'll be included in the county tax should that be approved as part of the Knox County budget.
And Bill, when is that meeting that they're having, the Budget Committee, the Knox County Budget?
It's actually on Halloween at 5:00 PM. So it's October 31st in the Commissioner's Hearing Room.
And we're planning to send a letter.
I'm planning on attending the meeting, and I'm going to contact the, our Budget Committee members as well.
By a letter?
Yes.
Just in case, because there was some discussion at the meeting that Bill and I attended about whether or not the Budget Committee actually allows, allows the people in the audience to speak or not.
Right. Yep. We have some personnel changes for the town. Glenna Dolson, who was formerly a part-time snowplow operator with the town, has been hired to fill the recently vacant full-time position in Public Works. In the Codes, Planning, and Assessing Departments, Mandy Mariner Everett has been hired for the temporary part-time administrative assistant position. In the Police Department, Jonathan Poole has been hired as a full-time police officer. And also, that's not in your list, Wyatt Summers has completed his probationary period and has been appointed as deputy clerk by the town clerk. An update on the wastewater study. I won't go through where we stand, because we've, there's still some inspections that need to be done by the code officer. But a question had been arisen by a board member about whether we're going to start seeing a decrease. Well, we will. It's just a matter of, we get, we get the information quarterly from Camden about the flows, so it'll take a while for us to get that information. We haven't received the last quarter yet, and we do expect that we'll see a decrease, but we'll keep monitoring that as we get that information. But we should see a steady decrease, I would think, as those corrections are made. Bill Napower and I had a meeting with the MDOT Region Two Planner, Steve Cole, who was new to his position. He's been in the position for about four months or so. We talked about the different projects in Rockport and future ideas and concerns regarding transportation in Rockport. We also brought up the potential for the land swap, which of course is the first time that it's been broached with MDOT. He brought it back with his managers, and to no surprise, they, we were informed that they are not interested in the land swap or sale of that property. We will continue to pursue it, though, and back channel.
Why do you say no surprise?
Generally, anytime you bring something like that to the attention of DOT, the first answer is no.
No, okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why we'll continue to bring it up and discuss it with them. They kind of have to have time for it to percolate in their minds and then bring it up again and again.
Was the bridge discussed at all?
I don't believe it was, no.
Well, I'm curious about the timing on replacement of the bridge.
Yeah, I'll double-check with him on that.
Okay.
I will. We're making progress on the LED streetlight project. I did have a meeting today with all of the other officials in the towns that are involved in the project, Union, Camden, Rockland, trying to think of the others, Thomaston, Waldeboro. Basically, the next steps we have are include choosing an installer and choosing the type of fixture for Rockport, as well as maintenance for the, for the streetlights once we do obtain them. At your next meeting on October 28th, I'm going to have some recommendations for the board to act upon, and then we can get into a purchase and sale agreement with CMP so we can purchase the lights and move forward with that, with that project. I think it makes sense to try to work with the communities around us so the streetlights look similar in color and, and light, so that we're not having a, you know, difference when you're driving along Route 1, for instance, from Rockland to Rockport into Camden.
In that regard, we had been told previously that we would, at some point, be able to look at, you know, a sample of the different designs, and then I think the next thing we were told, this is all before you came, the next thing we were told, I think, was, well, if we went to Portland or wherever and looked at the streetlights, well, I mean, unless we happen to be in Portland at night or whatever, I mean, that's kind of...
It's getting easier and easier.
Yeah, right, exactly. So, um, so anyway, so I think this board, you know, definitely was interested in the level of light, the kind of light, the color of light, the, I mean, in terms of the light itself.
Yes.
And then, and then the fixture, you know, what the fixture looked like. So just so that you know, we've never gotten any kind of answers to those questions, so...
Yep, and gathering all that information.
Yeah, don't surprises too much, right?
I have most of that, I have most of that now.
Great.
I think one of the biggest questions that the board, I'm going to be asking you to answer, is whether or not you want to continue with the decorative streetlights that you have in town. And I don't know if you're aware or not, but there are 150 decorative lights that are in the community, and of course, they're very old now. But you'll need to decide whether you want to replace those with a decorative type, similar to what they are, or whether you want to go with a regular Cobra head light. I do have photos of some of those examples, so you'll be able to see what, you know, what we're looking at. So I'll have that all available to you, and I'll get that, I'll get that out to you as soon as I can, so you can start reviewing that, that information.
Are those dec, I'm sorry, are those decorative lights any more in the village?
They, they are in the village, but they are also, they kind of emanate out from the village.
No, I was going to say, the decorative are probably newer than the others, because they were put up in the dawn Willett era in 97, so probably only 23 years old.
Three years old.
Two or three years old, so they're probably newer than the other ones.
Right, right. But to switch them over to LED, you have to have a different fixture and different arm, and generally, the cost to do that is, I believe it's $400 or $500 more per fixture, which is...
Is that a decorative one?
Yes, which is substantial when you're talking 150 of them.
Bring us the numbers.
Yeah, I will.
That will make the decision easier.
Yep. Now, you'll have all that information for your October 28th meeting, if not before, so that you can have a chance to take a look at it before then. Some things that are not on the list for you, the International City Management Association Conference starts on Saturday, so I will be away Saturday through next Wednesday at that conference. So likely, your next packet of material will be delayed in getting it printed, unless I can work through email with my executive assistant to get that done. We're trying to firm up the agenda now for that meeting, so that we can have as much material ready as we can. In front of you at your seat, you have a list of, a completed list of Select Board Committee, the committees and Select Board and staff liaisons to those committees. I've gone through and assigned staff to those that may not have had staff to them, so you have that in front of you. I reviewed this with the department heads today at the department head meeting, so you should, you should be seeing at least one staff member at your committees, and you have been anyway, but moving forward, you'll know who they are as well. Couple of things to note that the clerk wanted me to bring up. Absentee ballots are available for the November 5th election. Please keep in mind that the bond that the board is requesting is on that ballot, so keep that in mind as well. And today, first half of taxes was due, and the town clerk's tax collector's office collected $763,000 over the counter. So they certainly earned their pay today, and they've been processing them through the mail for the previous week and a half or so, or two. So, that's all for me, Debra.
With regard to the bond, I think it's a fair statement to say that the board unanimously supports the passage of that.
Yeah.
I had a senior moment there.
Okay.
The bond for...
Infrastructure bond.
Yes, 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 yes. I missed the infrastructure word. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had that...
Long discussion.
Yeah, but we had, it's captured in our last notes of, I believe, where we recommended that going forward, 5-0.
Yep.
Or 4-0, I don't know if Mark was here or not. We want to, all right. Yes, we captured that in the set of notes, either the prior set or the one before.
Anything else for Bill? Okay, with that, we'll move on to amendments to the agenda. Does anyone have any proposed amendments? I am sorry, but I would like to remove the minutes from the consent agenda. I made it all the way through the minutes until my liaison report at the end, and I had some things that I think needed to be changed there, substantive things. So anything else? All right, let's go on to the meeting minutes. My only concern, again, was in the last page. It states that Chair Hall stated that this Wednesday, the MCSWC Finance Committee members will meet, and what I actually stated was that we met with Camden Wealth Management, who is the entity that does our investing. So I had said that the Finance Committee members met with Camden Wealth Management to discuss the investments. And then, the next couple of sentences are fine until we get to, or the next sentence is fine until we get to the end. It says, she, meaning me, discussed the return of the perk funds, and that Camden and Rockport are interested in turning over their share to MCSWC, but other towns are not. So that bald statement will get me in a lot of trouble with Hope in Lincolnville, and that's not accurate in terms of what I said. What I said was that, but other towns have expressed concerns, period. And then, the point to that was Camden Wealth Management suggested this might be addressed in the future with subaccounts, period. More information will be obtained. I can give you this, Linda. But the point being that we've always been kind of all-in or all-out in terms of whether or not we turned over those perk funds, that unless there was agreement by all four towns, we don't know yet, but Camden Wealth Management has suggested we handle it through subaccounts, so that might give us the ability for the towns that want to turn over the perk funds to turn them over, and those who don't want to turn over the perk funds and continue to hold them in some escrow account or whatever, to continue to do that. So that's what I explained, and anyway, I'll give you this page, Linda. That's all I have. Any other comments? And somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended, the September 23rd, 2019 minutes, as amended by Chair Hall.
You ready? Want to second that? Doug? All in favor? Any opposed? No. 5-0. Next item on the agenda, moving on to action items, is consider appointments to the RES Development Committee. Bill?
And I do want to say that I inadvertently left off Dana Start, who was also a candidate that you, the board, previously met with at, on the September 9th meeting, and I, for some reason, left him off the candidate list that I included in your materials. So he should be included there, and he lives on 22 West Street.
So, do we have anybody here tonight who had submitted an application? Are you? Eric? Okay, I didn't know, hadn't met you, and I was hoping we would meet you tonight.
He's at the Budget Committee.
Oh, right, 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 okay.
But that was my first time.
Okay, gotcha, right. Okay. So Eric, so Eric is one of the individuals who submitted an application. Eric, would you please walk up and tell us about your background and what you think you'd like to contribute to the committee?
All right, well, let's see, my background has been in accounting and finance and economics for like 30-plus years, closer to 40. So I've been doing, you know, I have a lot of background in understanding numbers and flow projects, and I've done bookkeeping, accounting for anything from construction to retail, and small businesses, large businesses. One business I did was multi-million, so 10 million a year we did. Right now, I work at Philbrook and Associates, so I handle multiple projects and clients there. So, you know, I get to see a lot of numbers, I'm really good at that. I also have a very good interest for development and projects. When I was in Plantation, Florida, I was on the Landscape Committee, which we would approve plans and things that were brought to us, similar, you know, but those were plans coming into us, but we always got to make our comments. And then, coming up here, I'm just trying to get back into some politics and committee work, so, because I always want to be able to, you know, work for the community that I live in, you know, I want to help, you know? I've always wanted to get into that. So, and this project, I think, is something that could be really beneficial to the community as a whole, and, you know, as long as it's something that's community-centered and improves and maybe helps produce additional tax income, that would be great, you know? But while inclusive of the community as a whole, and not just something that's kind of there, you know, I'm looking for, I want to see something that's useful to Rockport itself and make Rockport kind of stand out from the surrounding areas.
Good, thank you. Anybody have any questions, Eric?
I can say that we on the Budget Committee are enthused to have another money-minded person to help sort through the information that will be coming.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, that's certainly one of the disciplines that we were hoping we would get an application for.
Yeah, I've been doing it a long time. I started at 13, so it's really close to 40 years.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
All right.
I think maybe, just to break this up a little bit, to make it kind of clear in my head who's where, first thing I would like to do is I'd like to make a motion that the board appoint Janet Hall to the RES Redevelopment Committee as a neighborhood member.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this is going to get complicated and messy, isn't it? Because we've got multiple candidates for multiple positions, and it's just going to be motions and votes and vote count.
I mean, similar to Eric, I know that she has financial background too, so we're going to run into possibly having many people that has financial.
And I, I guess my understanding was she would be the neighbor representative.
I'm trying to think, if you, if you have a broad, well, doesn't make any difference. If she has a specialty, as does Eric with finance, then, you know, that might be one of each. She might be the neighbor and the finance person.
Yeah.
That's all I was trying to point out.
Okay, are, is there any opposition then to taking the neighbor position separately committee?
So how many, with regards to whom we have, there's nobody been selected except for the...
Nani.
Well, and Doug and I are the two liaisons.
Right, but I'm just trying to make sure that the makeup of the board is a majority of Rockport, as far as committee members.
Sure.
Before we start doing outside assistance.
So you have four that you need to, to appoint.
Right.
One of which is a neighbor.
One of which is a neighbor representative, yes.
Of the candidates on the list, who are we considering in the neighbor bucket?
I think the...
Was Dana in that category?
Yeah, Dana.
Dana and Janet border.
Dana, Janet.
And Dave lives three houses down.
Dave Jackson, that's right.
Okay. So you have those three that probably would qualify for neighborhood.
Right.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the table to select Janet for the neighbor representative. Any other discussion before we vote on that? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, roll call. Mark?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Debra, yes.
Also, I talked with Dyke Messler, who I'd spoken with earlier, and he was happy to do it. He sent in an application. He did say with the caveat, though, that he goes out of town during the fall, and he's gone for most of the winter. So since we had a plethora of candidates, I contacted Dyke, and he graciously agreed to pull his name off the table to leave room for people that would be able to attend more frequently.
Doug, do you have any other recommendations or liaison?
Well, it's not my recommendations. I know the people I would like to see, and I guess to start the discussion, I would make a motion that the board appoint Amanda Dwelly. Well, wait a minute. Well, okay, let me point out, too, we're missing a person from the Parks and Beautification Committee, so I'm actually going to make...
That's Nani. That's Nani.
No, I'm sorry, the Recreation Committee.
Recreation, so we might have another space.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion that the board appoint Amanda Dwelly, Martin Cates, Eric Boucher, and Sarah Greer as representatives to the RES Redevelopment Committee.
Any second?
I second that for discussion.
Any discussion?
Yeah. No, go ahead. Well, I, it's going to be difficult to approve one great big batch, because it doesn't leave us any room for pros and cons here and that type of thing, because we've all got our list, and it's going to be a process to get there. We've got...
Yeah, I'll withdraw. I see your point, so I'll withdraw.
And I'd like to motion that the board appoint Eric Boucher to the RES Redevelopment Committee.
Second. I'll second that.
Okay, Mark just did. Mark seconded. Any discussion regarding Eric? All in favor? Okay, 5-0.
You got 5-0. So we have Janet and Eric. Are we going to go with a, a fifth because of the Rec Committee member absence? Did we decide that?
Hey, if these people want to be on the committee, Recreation Committee doesn't...
Doesn't want to be, yeah.
Should we make a motion to, as a board, to make that change?
Sure.
All right, so I'll motion that the one position that was held for the Rec Committee member be granted to one of the existing candidates for this committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? 5-0.
All right, I'll make a motion that we appoint Sarah Greer to the RES Development Committee.
Sarah, second?
I'll second it for discussion.
I'd like to see us fill our Rockport residents quota before we start going outside of town, as would I.
Sarah, Sarah is a resident?
She lives in Camden.
Well, she runs a business in Rockport.
Well, I think we have always...
Oh. She said she was a resident.
No, no, she lives on Union Street in Camden.
Okay. But she is a Rockport business owner. She's the owner of Bleeker and Greer.
But I think we're required to fill our committees with a majority of residents prior to doing...
Well, I'm not sure about that, but...
I don't know. That's a guess. She's a business owner.
Our bylaw stated that we approve non-residents by exception through the Select Board.
That's what we're doing. Well, I want to make sure that we have a majority of residents prior to doing non-residents.
Should we start with Amanda? So you want to withdraw your motion and...
Sure.
Do another resident?
Yep. I think after that, though, we ought to take a tally as to where we stand with residents, non-residents.
I make a motion, which I can do, to appoint Amanda Dwelly to the RES Committee.
Amanda Dwelly...
Any discussion?
Sorry.
She was here and spoke to us last time. She has a master's in planning.
I remember. Apparently, she's not a resident, she's a clerk.
She's a property owner, yeah.
She owns property in Rockport, and she's building a house in Rockport.
So she's paying taxes.
So she's paying, right, just paying Rockport taxes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Who seconded that?
I did.
Opposed? Okay, Mark?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Debra, yes.
I'll motion that we appoint Mary Stevens to the RES Redevelopment Committee.
And what role is she?
It doesn't make any difference.
Okay, does somebody want to second it?
Yep, second.
Okay, discussion. What role is she? It does make a difference. We have roles.
Yeah, she's, she's in the construction, does the RFQs, the RPs, marketing.
I certainly liked her construction background under this sort of a project, and I know she's been active in the community. She certainly comes to meetings and stuff.
It would, it would be in that group of three.
Anything else? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, 5-0.
Well, I'll make a motion that the Select Board appoint Martin Cates to the RES Development Committee.
Any second? Discussion?
Martin is a Camden resident that works in Rockland.
I met him with Doug, just and asked him to submit an application. He was concerned about that issue. I guess I, I was impressed with his real estate background and the networking contacts he has, really throughout the state, and a big part of this RES redevelopment is getting people to be interested in this project and coming in and wanting to invest in Rockport. And I thought he brought something different to the table than others who might be more local, because he does have the networking and already had some ideas of, you know, being able to reach out to the sort of Portland metro area as well as other midcoast communities. And, you know, I think this project at the RES site sort of lives or dies based on the quality of the applicants that we get to come in. So that's, I would be in favor of him because, and I understand that he's not a resident, and we do want to be careful and give deference to residents who are interested in serving on committees, but he brings something to the table that I didn't see any of the other applicants could bring.
Yeah, additionally, he met with the ad hoc group a few months ago, and he was very insightful, very helpful in helping us focus on putting together the RFQ, or he didn't help us put together the RFQ, but he, he gave us some insights that really helped us in terms of flushing, flushing that out, which is why, for the reasons that Denise said, I think that he's kind of uniquely qualified, and it's worthy of... And it's worthy of having an exception, I think, to the residents.
I think the success of this project is gonna be more than just about Rockport. I mean, you know, it is Rockport and it's gonna be one of our crown jewels, I hope, in the final analysis. But, you know, if people were to come to shop and participate as part of a community, I think we'll be drawing people from Camden, Rockland, Union, Hope. You know, they'll come in and I think it's good to have someone who has a countywide view and not just the town.
Any other discussion?
Were there any other, I mean, I realize that mine's had an interest in it from the beginning. I think he was courted by somebody to be part of the group. But have there been any other real estate people that are even living in Rockport, which there must be, that might have been equally to the task?
No one's approached us.
No, and we have asked specifically for other people with broad real estate experience, both residential and commercial. And no one else has even been suggested, although Doug and I have tried. And as far as being courted the group, I never heard his name nor met him until he came to that ad hoc meeting. Anything else? Motion and second on the table, all in favor? Opposed? Mark?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Doug?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Deborah? Yes.
All right, so does that fills the committee? Fills the committee.
Yep.
Fills it. And run down those names again, please.
It's Janet Hall as the neighbor representative, Hunani as the Parks and Beautification representative, Doug and me as the select board representatives, Eric Boucher, Amanda Dwelly, Mary Stevens, and Martin Cates.
Thank you.
And I'm quite sure that if the group feels we need more expertise or whatnot, you know, we'd certainly be open to that.
Yeah, certainly nothing that stops us from expanding-
Changing or expanding.
Expanding the numbers on the, on the group. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approve harbor fee schedule and marine park rental fees.
So you have two different things in front of you and the harbor master can certainly answer questions that you may have. But just as a general overview, the harbor committee voted unanimously in favor of recommending the new harbor fee schedule and the marine park rental fees. The biggest changes were in the marine park rental fees versus the harbor fees, as those were updated last year. The biggest change in the harbor fee schedule is adding a cancellation fee. As we've had several cancellations this past summer, where there is no, there is no penalty currently for people that reserve space and then cancel. So that was added. And then there are several changes in the marine park rental fees. Abby, you certainly could speak.
I do have, I do have a point of correction. I was, I was sitting there and remembered what your memo may say. In the River Dingle location, the, the big change would be changing it from a resident and non-resident fee. But I proposed the 125 and 175 to the harbor committee and they chose to bump up the 175 non-resident fee to 200. So that should read 200, not, I think yours says 175.
It does.
Okay, it should say 200. Other than that, it's, I should explain the rest of it, but-
So the changes, Abby, just so that I'm clear, we, the one we just discussed on the dinghy tie-off, 125, which is the same for residents, 200 for non-residents, which in prior years paid 125.
It paid the same across.
Okay. The commercial vessel, passenger vessel went up from 35 a night to 40 a night, which is the same as what Camden charges.
Yep.
And we now have a cancellation policy, a fee. And I, in your memo, I think there might be a, just a typo here, the third bullet should say we take a one-night reservation, sorry, a one-night deposit upon reservation. And if the vessel does cancel their reservation within 72 hours of arrival, then they forfeit the one-night fee. Correct?
If, if they-
There are usually no shows. They don't bother to call you and cancel.
Right, if they call within 72 hours of arrival, they don't have to pay it.
Okay, so we flipped the sentence around. All right.
And what I read on the, on the schedule was that these are for vessels of, is it 50 feet or more?
Right. And is there- Yeah, just 'cause, is there a reason for that?
Yeah.
That's the, the big fees and those are the people that we're finding are canceling. You know, those are the, the big boats and, and those are the ones that are most impactful and, and stay for, you know, a week at a time. And if they cancel, that's a huge hole to fill. Whereas a 35-foot boat, if they don't, it's not so much, you know, skin off our back. And then we're not taking so many deposits over the phone, which is cumbersome, too. So I guess we'll try it this, propose to try it this way if you have, you know, other suggestions. We're open to it, too.
When, when they reserve, or the cancellation is made, do you have a card number that you already take?
We haven't been, so this, we will now. We'll take a one-night, yeah, we'll take a card and a card number.
A $100, $200 charge, whatever.
Right, whatever the night fee is, charge them that. And then, you know, when they come and they stay three nights, we'll charge them the two nights when they get, the remainder when they get there.
So they could reserve a week, not show up and only be paying for one day out of the week. I'm just-
Yeah, I mean theoretically, yes, but I spoke with a lot of captains about this and they said they just sort of circle all the harbors that they actually have to pay something before and the rest of them are just sort of like erased in their brain. They don't call, they don't show up, they don't, anything. So a lot of times we'll get forward notice. It won't be like a, oh, or I'll be calling them, which has happened this summer a few times. And we may find that that's not enough, you know, that's one, the one, you know, that they have to pay the whole thing or something. But it was pretty typical when I called other marinas that did this.
To do the one night.
Yeah, one night.
And then, sorry, Bill, did you mention the, the park, the changes in the park setup fee?
They're more significant, so I'll leave that to Abby to review those, but the marine park-
Yeah, so the rental, and Sam Temple is here from, he's the chair of the harbor committee now as well, so he can, he can, he can help me. Just that the, if you've read before, and I only have the current list of marine park rental in front of me, but it just about doubled the fee, pretty much the committee decided to go up significantly. One of the reasons being, you know, public events in the park were a little, are hard to swallow, being that someone could set up their tent on a Thursday, not take it down till Monday, and that's impacting the whole park for all the public use, yet they're only really paying for an event fee. That was just one single fee. So someone, in theory, could be paying, you know, $350 to have a tent in the park for five days. So that didn't really, that doesn't really fly at all. And that, you know, the impact to the park is enough that, so that it should be significantly, you know, at least helping to offset the cost of the park to the taxpayers. I mean, that's just, that's pretty much, you know, the impetus behind it. And that, looking at other comparable, sorry, venues, that this, this was more in line before, the old ones were really-
Is that a typo at the marine park harbor fees? Should that be 1120 to 123120?
Yes, it should.
Preparing my motion, that's all, just getting ready.
So, so now, what's being proposed then? It's a full event day for a resident, let's say, then, is $600, right? So let's say you have a wedding on Saturday. And if you put up your tent on Thursday and you take it down on Monday, then what exactly are you paying?
You're paying those full days. You're paying $600 per day.
Per day?
Yep, but if you put it, if you set it up Friday afternoon and took it down Sunday morning, you'd be paying, you know, 300 on the half-day setup and take down.
On Friday and 300 on Sunday.
On Sunday and 600, so it would be a $1,200 event.
Right.
And then another significant area in that is the, the deposit. I think it was $100 before? Which, what can you, what can you do for $100? Can't get a cleanup through, so now it's a $500. And changing the, the two-hour rental to a three-hour rental, because it just seemed to be more in line with what was actually happening by the time people got chairs up to do something and chairs down, it was more like three hours. So we just thought we'd capture the reality of the rental. Do you have anything to add, Tim?
No.
Any other questions? Comments?
In the year prior, there were multiple increases across the harbor fees. So I think this is, the changes made this year are appropriate. As the liaison to the harbor committee.
Good enough for me.
I would move that the marine park harbor fee schedule presented us effective 1-1-2020 through 1231-2020 be accepted as amended.
Second.
I'm not sure I got all the amended.
Would that all, yeah, the other $200 thing.
Just the one amendment.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Thank you.
You know, I just realized, sorry, that I blew past the public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here to speak about non-agenda items? I didn't think so, but I'm sorry that I blew past that. My fault. Okay, going back to the agenda, the next item is approved conservation commission committee bylaws.
As a, as a liaison to that, I would say that they took great, they went through great measures to make sure that they got things up to date or corrected.
And I know it's consistent with the format and so forth in approving for the bylaws, appears to be.
I move that the board approve the conservation commission bylaws as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Only one item, just to make sure, we've made sure that the format and content of this is all spot on?
Yes, looks like it.
Good.
It seems how we're in that comment portion. Do we have all the bylaws updated now? Do we know? How many more are we missing?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but there's-
I probably am one of the guilty parties with one of my committees, but-
Well, we'll continue to have, probably have said every, every meeting or two, depending on how we get through them.
Slugging through them. Okay, there was a first and a second. All in favor? Five zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is approve creation of a comprehensive plan committee. Bill, you wanna talk about that?
Yes, so in your materials is a description of the comprehensive plan committee and the process as prepared by Bill Napower and I. It's basically recommended that the committee consists of 15 members, and I know that sounds like a lot. But they would, that would include at least one member from key town boards and committees, such as the planning board, board of appeals, conservation commission, and harbor committee. And of course, the select board already has two liaisons. You could decide whether you wanted to add a voting member on the committee or whether the liaisons would be enough, certainly up to the, up to the board when it comes to that.
And if we added, if we added another one, though, then we would have three members of the board present at any meeting.
You would, but they're all gonna be public meetings regardless. And it wouldn't, you wouldn't be really voting on anything, per se. So I personally think two liaisons is enough. I don't think you need to add a third member to that. You also have the process laid out in front of you in the, in the memo. Basically, the inventory sections will be essentially done this fall by staff. And then the winter, beginning in the winter, January 2020, and then throughout the year, the committee would meet, review the inventory sections, conduct public meetings and information gathering sessions, and hopefully do that throughout the community, not just, you know, at, at this meeting room or at town, town office, but do it at the Masonic Hall or, you know, other meeting places without, in the community, so they can have some, some neighborhood input, if you will. And that will be determined, of course, by staff along with the committee. Update the plan policies as to what's already been completed from the comprehensive plan and, and looking at the land use plan. Continue the review process through the winter 2021 with the hopes to get the final plan to a vote at the June town meeting in 2021. It is a lengthy process, but it's supposed to be that way because you wanna have plenty of input from residents, because this really is the, the plan that staff use to move the town forward on, on all the different areas that the plan covers, keeping in mind that the last update was 15 years ago for the comprehensive plan.
We had a working session, multiple working sessions about a year or so ago.
Yes.
In your office, there is one marked up version that says master on it that has all the cleanup activity marked up.
Yep, yep.
And I have the Word file for the original somewhere.
Be excellent to forward that to me so that I can get that to the planner.
Yeah, but we haven't, we haven't gone through the Word document and made the edits. We have the master copy that has pencil and paper markups.
Yeah, and if you get that to me, we're certainly gonna have staff-
It's, it's in your office.
Edit those.
Or, or within 20 feet.
I'll have to find it.
On the other side of the wall, maybe.
Yeah.
Would these meetings be livestreamed?
The working sessions?
The working sessions of the comprehensive plan?
Yes, I would assume that they would be. We, we-
My recollection is the last time, that, that the prior work that was done at the group was livestreamed. I know that the, we had some workshop meetings with the board that were, of course, public, but we're over in the Richardson Room as we were slogging through some of the, yeah, more mundane stuff. But it seemed to me that the other stuff, that the other meetings of the prior group were livestreamed.
I would think that they should be, with the exception of those meetings that are gonna be offsite.
Yes, right.
You can't do those, obviously, but, and I think it's very important that those be held at others, you know, at other neighborhoods within, within the community as well, to try to get as much input from all sectors of town as possible, so. So what we're looking for tonight from the board is just the approval of the creation of, of the committee. I'm suggesting a deadline of November 30th for applicants, so that then we can, the board can make the appointments at your first meeting in December, so that they can start meeting, most likely after the first of the year, once we get through that process.
I move the board approve the creation of the comprehensive plan committee to include 15 members with membership as presented and a November 30th, 2019 deadline for candidates to apply for membership.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
That means they'll be before us on the first meeting in December?
That would be the goal, yes.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Five zero. All right, next item is approve Opera House fee schedule.
I certainly introduce this, but I would encourage Denise to step into, as well as the Opera House manager. We began tackling this kind of as a, as a group, if you will. Once we worked on the contract language to get the, the original fees that were approved by the select board back on July 8th into motion, it was determined that the fee schedule really was not as well-vetted as it should have been to begin with. So thanks to Denise working with Drew, I think that's in place now. And Denise, you certainly can speak to that.
Yeah, I think mostly what Drew and I discovered is as we went through the meeting room rates, it wasn't really an increase, once you added in the, some of the costs that we were, you know, Drew was trying to do two things. One was an increase, but second was also to build in and make it sort of one-stop shopping, so you didn't end up with a whole list of add-ons, that you paid a base rate and then you had to pay for a staff attendant who had to be there. And then we were paying custodial costs, but not getting that paid for. And what ended up happening for the Opera House last year is we just ran out- And what ended up happening for the Opera House last year is we just ran out of money for the custodian. And then it was, you know, everybody running around trying to figure out how to get the place clean to rent it out. So it just wasn't the best system. So Drew's idea was to build the custodian cost into the fees, and that's, that's what's here. So it's essentially the front memo just delineates the changes from what the Select Board already approved in July. So Drew's rate, you know, we had him at $27 an hour in the old thing. But according to Megan, his actual payroll cost to the town is $38 an hour. So that's the rate that we're going to charge him out at. And then the custodial time, we just, rather than assuming if you have a three-hour event, you need three hours of custodian time. Three hours is down here, and you can sort of look around you and figure out how you could spend three hours cleaning. So we made that two hours to just be a little more realistic. And upstairs, same thing, a four-hour event, three hours seemed like adequate custodian time. So to just get sort of really understanding what it's costing us to include that custodian time in the, in the event price.
Basically, just to clarify, what was approved back in July was really the proposal to bundle all the fees and actually go ahead with an increase. But then after we actually got involved in that process, it's sort of, we realized that we were going to have to get approval on the actual numbers when we finally got them and what that really meant. So I think we're finally there now, but.
So, and, I mean, obviously, I can read it, but if I'm a private Rockport renter and I want to rent the place, I'm going to pay the same as the Sammaset would as a commercial?
Definitely not. We're still going to be the cheapest venue in the area. I mean.
You mean if Sammaset came and rented out our space?
If somebody wanted the meeting room, it's saying private or commercial, Rockport-based, they're paying the same at $275.
Well.
I'm just asking, I mean, there's a difference between me wanting to go up and have a cribbage tournament versus the Sammaset, you know, a corporation renting it.
It's a Rockport-based?
If it's a Rockport, I mean, we obviously still offer discounts for residents or nonprofit businesses, but it would still be basically the same, same thing.
And this, the only change from what was approved in July is that we raised the rates for the meeting rooms. So, you know, it went from two, it had been 150 and it went to 200 for the nonprofit Rockport-based. Other nonprofits went from 200 to 250, and the private-commercial Rockport-based went from 250.
Private slash commercial.
No, I understand your point, Mark, but that was an issue that could have, that we didn't talk about in July. We're, all that we're doing, I mean, I guess everything's open, but the point of tonight is to just say there were a few numbers that weren't raised that after further reflection and analysis, the numbers we, for the meeting room were increased from what was approved in July. And that's all that this, that's the point of presenting this to the Select Board for approval tonight is those three rates went up.
The room rates.
The room rates for the meeting room.
Okay, so.
But we've already approved the auditorium rates, those didn't change, the wedding, funeral, memorial.
And we're all working off this page that says draft on it, correct?
Yes.
And we're looking at the blue-lined changes.
Under the three hour.
Okay. So I'm looking at a total of, I mean, without the verbiage, I'm looking at a total of five numbers here that were changed or so, right, sex?
Yep.
Okay. Now, are these remaining pages here? Is this your working documentation?
That's the working document. The renters are only going to see.
Table is inverted, it's transposed from the draft version here, so I just want to make sure we're working off. What you're asking us to do is to approve, so everybody, this page right here.
Yes.
Yep. The rest of it's just the backup.
Rest of it supports how those numbers were developed, in the same way that you were, we were provided the numbers in July.
All right. So your working documents here, just, were the rationale behind, behind how you get to these numbers?
Yep.
All right.
One of the things that we said in July, we noted in July, I think, was that the ability of the town manager, we didn't put it on the schedule because we weren't really advertising it, but the ability of the town manager to waive, to waive fees in appropriate circumstances. So let's say that you have somebody who wants to do a fundraising event for the West Rockport Fire Station or the library, and it's purely, you know, all of the monies are going to the town. It's kind of silly to take, to charge them to do it just so that they can give the money back to the town. So that's not in here, but we talked about that in July as being an ability the town manager would have. And I know that in discussions with Bill, he believes that that's the case.
And when we look at this again, unless the Board wants to change the rates for those commercial entities that are Rockport-based, such as the Sammaset or other businesses, if you want to do that tonight, you certainly could do that. But we could certainly take that into consideration for next year when we look at the fee schedule again. You know, to have a different level of fee for a business entity or a commercial entity, whether it's Rockport-based or if it was outside, which is a higher fee anyway, but we certainly could look at that.
That was another thing that was actually approved in July was to review these fees annually because it hadn't been done, as far as I could tell, for many years, it didn't look like so.
Yeah, and maybe we'd have more data on how many commercial venture, you know, it's sort of, who's really renting the Opera House? And as Drew said, most everybody figures out how to be a resident. Doesn't matter who they are, but they find a resident to help them get it rented. So when you start to agonize over what the non-resident rates should be, and Drew's like, I've never done a non-resident rental, but no.
I have, but it's just not as common, obviously.
But the bulk of them are, end up being residents, so in terms of where we focus on the fees that matter.
Further discussion? Somebody want to make a motion?
I move the Board approve the Opera House fee schedule as presented. So I can make any changes.
Okay, there's a first and a second. Further discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Thanks, Drew.
Okay, presentation from Parks and Beautification Committee and approval of requests.
Yep. Hunani and I have just a little presentation today we wanted to go through. You have some of this in your packet. I'm going to work from over here. Does this laser pointer, does it work on the screen or can you not see that?
You're not going to see it on the TV. Well, you might.
You can see it on the wall behind, but not.
Yeah, that won't help it. Well, this is going to be kind of awkward, but let me work over here and try not to get in your guys' way, but I have to point some things out.
A green dot. There you go.
Good for that to change the day.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's all right. Get you, am I coming through there okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Basically, what we wanted to do this evening is just update the Select Board and the public on what Parks and Beautification Committee had been doing with particular attention to Memorial Park and the Rockport Library landscaping. And then Hunani's going to talk a little bit about Goodrich Park. So just as a refresher for everybody, this is March of 2016. And Keith Smith, the landscape architect, originally did this concept plan that people were sort of just working off of. And this is, you know, well before we started the, started the actual construction. And then we fast-forwarded to May of 2019, and Keith Smith had updated this a little bit. I want to go back actually for a minute here. Let me show you a few things, March of 2016. This is the Memorial Park in here, and you'll notice that at this time there were 14 parking spaces. I think you'll all remember that. And then going ahead, we then now have seven parking spaces, and this was based on the vote that the Select Board made back in March. So as a reminder, the state's going to pay for all of this sidewalk down here, up here, along here, and there. We're paying for the parking here, and the state's also going to do that.
So, so let me get this straight. The state is paying for sidewalks on?
My understanding is they're paying for this down here.
Yep.
And along here.
Well, you went up for.
As well as here.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Pretty nice of them.
Oh, I'm wrong.
Well, they're not paying for all of it. They're paying that split, which is
Fifty.
60, 40, or 50, 50, something like that. And that's separate from the library budget, right?
Yes, it's separate.
In our budget.
Right.
Okay? So again, you can see that there's really very little difference over three years, except for the parking, a few tweaks here and there. So none of this should really be new to people. I guess that's sort of right now the take-home message, except for fewer parking spaces. This design has been around for three years, and I think most people are pretty familiar with it. And it's the plan that we plan to move ahead with. I want to split this up into two different parts. We're going to talk about Memorial Park first. That is the part that the Parks and Beautification Committee are going to try to do on their own. We're not hiring a landscape architect. The concept is, this is a very simple plan. We have lots of nurseries and landscaping people in town who we think will donate their services and help us with that part. Obviously, the work at the library has to be a little more professional, let's say. And for that, you'll remember the Select Board has allocated $6,000 to work with Keith Smith. And tonight, I'll show you a little bit of the work that he has proposed, and we're going to be asking for the Select Board's approval. We're about $2,000 into his, his work on the library per se. So let's start up at Memorial Park because in some ways, this is a little bit easier. Get yourselves oriented. This is Union Street over here. This is Lime Rock Street here. These are our seven parking areas. Let's start down in this corner here. The existing memorial, the large existing memorial, it's there, it has mature plantings around it. We're hoping we can leave that just the way that it is. There is a culvert that runs directly underneath it with the new street plan, but we think Gartney and Dorsky can give us a workaround with the culvert so that this can be left undisturbed, which would be really nice. We show a little bit of decorative work in front of that monument at the corner. Right now, there is already a smaller monument that's down in about this location, and Keith had suggested moving that up to this area here. And then there'll be hopefully some sort of a walkway through the park, which we'll have to pay for. Just parks scattered throughout the, benches scattered throughout the park. We hope this will be part of our memorial bench program, have that be part of it. This is the third memorial, and again, it would just be located in the central part. And again, you know, our local nurseries, landscapers can handle that sort of landscaping there. So this is pretty straightforward. The rest of it is grass.
And one of those three is the one in Wyman Square?
Let me just think for a minute. No, I think that's on the next slide, Mark.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that gets included in there.
That'll be on the next slide.
So Doug, is this an opportunity to, you mentioned that we need some walkways in the interior of the park? Is that what you just said?
Well, I'm just saying that there is.
We would have to pay for?
Yeah, this, you know.
Oh, that, you're saying that one or there's others?
Because that would join up with those others.
Just this one.
Okay.
You know, that could be as simple as a gravel walkway or something, but just for people that are coming down the road, you know, they can come across and go to the library.
The only thing I wanted to throw out, and I'm sure you guys have thought about this, maybe it's an opportunity to do like brick or something and have people pay for bricks.
Yeah, well, all these things are right on the table.
Yeah.
Okay, so again, this is the Memorial Park, fairly straightforward. So then we'll go on, now we're going to jump across the street. Now we're over, obviously, at the, the library side. Mark, to answer your question, the Wyman Memorial will probably be incorporated right into that little bump out that's going to be created, so we thought we would just preserve that there. Tonight, let me just orient you with this. This is Tom Young's house here. This is Russell Avenue coming in, Union Street, and up top would be Lime Rock Street. I want to spend most of our time now talking about this southwest side next to Tom Young's property because this is where Keith has done most of his work. Let me start off by saying that this area here realistically is probably not going to happen. First of all, we don't have the money for it. There's some question about how much space we have back here. There will be enough room for a pickup truck to come back and service. Some of our air conditioning units are going to be back in this area as well as our propane tank. So right now, although in the future might be possible, there's really probably not going to be much in that location right there. This pathway that's shown here, coming around the side, again, is probably not going to be there simply because this area is much narrower than it looks here, and it's a very steep drop-off on the grade. So we're not going to have that in there. This is the patio terrace that comes off the Marine Room and the children's area. And then the walkway goes around to the elevated terrace in front, and that's all part of the structure.
Can I, before you get, I wanted to catch you while you were in the back with the servicing of the air conditioning units. Has there been any consideration given to the neighbors, the Earls, in any type of noise deadening that we can do? Because it's such a close confined area, I'm afraid it might be a little noisy for them.
Well, and we're aware of that. This is their barn, it's not actually their living quarters. There's trees here, and we're hoping we can, we can buffer it with more trees
Okay, thank you.
in that area there, but clearly that, as we stood there today looking at it, that was one of our thoughts.
I just want to talk a little bit about that so that people don't ask that question later, perhaps.
All right, so these are now the drawings that Keith Smith did for us very recently. And last week, the Parks and Beautification Committee did a site walk up here. So this plan is actually already a little bit outdated. And Hunani, if I say anything you think is wrong, jump up and tell me. First off, Keith had originally planned for us to build a small retaining wall at the corner here which would help hide part of this foundation up here. which would help hide part of this foundation up here. Right now, there's about one to two feet that are exposed. If this wall isn't here, it would be about three to four feet that's exposed. This here is a gravel drip edge around the building for the water coming off the roof. And again, this is the patio that walks out onto the elevated terrace. Couple of things we learned on the site walk one is that this is extremely steep in here. And from a practical standpoint, this looks like, oh, that's, you know, a nice grassy area where kids can play and things like that. And the reality is, this is going to be a no-man's land. It's going to have to be planted with Rosa Regosa or some sort of a bush or shrub to discourage the kids from coming down here. Because in lawyer speak, it's an attractive nuisance. Because it does drop off so steeply. And I'll show you on the next slide. This is the elevation of that same area that you'll see from Russell Avenue. And again, here was the proposed wall that's probably going to be eliminated, or we'd like to eliminate. And again, it gives you a sense of sort of how steeply this, this area drops off. This area could have plantings. It could just be grass. This retaining wall doesn't exist. That needs to be updated. We didn't need to have that, so it's not there. This wall is currently in place.
Doug, why do you say that that proposed wall on the right would be eliminated? Did I miss that?
Well, again, a couple of reasons. First, it adds cost. It's about $4,300. We got a quote from a local stone mason. Be $4,300. And it's, it doesn't serve a functional purpose. It simply allows us to bring more earth in to hide this little bit of foundation.
Right.
But as I said earlier, it's going to be kind of a no-man's land. So, there'll probably be low shrubs or trees that are going to hide the foundation anyhow.
Was that the area, Doug? I remember we were talking about some cosmetic facial stuff to the cement to make it not look like cement. Is that the area that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that is.
Yeah, I thought that was sort of a replacement for the $4,300 wall.
Well, any of these, this is exposed concrete. These things can all be treated with stucco coating or paint, you know, just depending on budget. I have an email into Keith. I haven't gotten back from him yet, but we really need to update this drawing. Because like I say, this isn't present. And that's probably not going to be there.
Is there any potential for sort of steps to bring down that, you know?
Yes, to terraced this?
Yes.
Yeah, it could be terraced.
With some granite.
Are you?
Well, I'm thinking?
Donating?
Are you donating? Let me just remind everybody.
No, I get it. But I'm just wondering. I mean, Nick, Nick Ruffin had asked that question when we were looking at, the foundation was looking at this stuff, if there's a way to sort of make this feel sort of kind and?
This could be very nicely terraced. No question about it. Right now, in the budget, what this is going to be is this is going to be contractors' grass seed. And then the areas up top are going to be crushed stone, okay? So, we're trying to improve on that a little bit. Now, this is the view from Tom Young's house and Mary Ann Young's house. Again, you have the riprap from the stream, which again, isn't terribly attractive. But we're hoping that we can identify something that will slowly grow down over that. This area here, it shows it green, but it's probably going to be more of a mulch. You remember, I said we were eliminating that pathway that came around the side. So, this is just going to be mulch with some sort of a planting. Obviously, we want to shield the Young's house a little bit. The trade-off is too, we don't want giant trees that are going to block these windows. So, we'll have to, you know, sort of come up with a compromise so that it looks pleasant. And again, protect some of the privacy. Again, I'm not expecting this wall to be here.
Are those windows or doors?
These are just windows.
Okay.
Those are windows.
They look kind of like doors, so that made sense.
Yeah.
To be windows, okay.
The, another thing that at some point's going to have to be decided, this isn't the best picture. But up at the patio there, there was sort of a bench that was built of brick. Maybe I can show that better. Well, let me go back here. This is sort of a brick bench. And again, we don't have a final idea for that. You've got to, again, make sure that people can't be coming down here and falling down into the stream. So, maybe this will be a bench incorporated with some sort of a fence. If we don't have the money, maybe we'll just have to put up some sort of a fence to keep people from, particularly children, from going down there.
I think they were talking about, as a possibility, Doug, using some of the steps that were used in the previous library as a cap for that brick.
That's all going to be, that is all going to be used on the other side, the Lime Rock, the main entry side. The granite steps will be capping the retaining walls there.
But the idea of that wall, basically, for everyone's input, is to keep people from falling down the steep slope.
Yeah, these drawings don't really do it justice. That, it's a, it's a hazard. And it's going to have to be addressed.
And if you go see it.
All right, so, again, I just want to make sure that the Select Board and the public sort of understands the direction that we're going with this. And as part of that, I am going to have some motions at the end here. And this gets into the philosophical discussion we've had before about, you know, how involved does the Select Board want to be with, you know, moving a row of dendron from here to there? Or, you know, weeding or whatnot. And this came up just recently because the Parks Committee would like to put some white stain on the fence that's up at the top of Mary Lee Park. People, some people, not everybody, but there've been a group of people that just say, oh, that's such an ugly fence. You know, we wanted a nice wrought iron fence. It's terrible, it's ugly. And yeah, it is. It's pressure-treated lumber. It's gray and brown. And the thought was, well, if we're not going to put in a nice wrought iron fence, maybe a little bit of white stain, you know, would make it look more attractive. It would match the trim on the Opera House here and just give it a little bit more of a New England appeal. But, you know, again, you know, Mark says, well, where do we go with that?
I'll throw myself under the bus because I did raise the question, being a liaison. To what degree do we allow committees to do what types of work without our blessing?
Yeah.
So, that's, that's the question. I mean, I think it's great. You know, personally, I like the way it is now, because that's just me. But to what degree do we, you know, require committees to come before us to say, I'd like to paint this, or I'd like to do that? Or they just go do it, and then we say, what the hell are you doing? You know, I'm just, to what degree of involvement do we?
Better to ask forgiveness than permission.
Yeah, but that's, that's all I was saying, is to what degree of involvement do we want to have committees undertake?
Well, they don't have the ability to spend money. So, it has to go through the town manager, at least, for the expenditure of funds. Because that, that we've made clear, that committees don't have the ability.
But that's not where I was going with it.
I, I understand. I, I understand. But I wanted to mention that there's that limitation.
Why don't we, why don't we populate on that? And then when Honani finishes her little part, you want to just do it from over here and push the button to dance it? Do you know how to do that?
All right, so, okay. So, I decided to start off with who's on the committee. And this is a list of the people that are on the committee. I'm going to read that. Rich Lerman is on a leave of absence right now. And we are hoping that we're going to get someone else to fill in for his, on his place. We recently appointed Sue Cock and, Sue Cock and Maggie Timmerman as co-secretaries. And that way, they can share the duty. Because sometimes that's a little bit of an issue. Here, I have a slide of the things that we've done so far. First of all, we've developed a plan for designing implementation of the restoration of Memorial Park and the library site. And that's what we have for you tonight. We've been taking inventory of the town parks and really kind of taking a look at it using a forum where we look at the strengths and weaknesses, the opportunities, and then the things that we're concerned about. And once we've finished doing all the parks, we will then come up with a, with a five-year plan as part of the budget process. We have taken a look at the milling and maintenance contracts for the parks and sat down with Bill Post because it seems that a lot of things are not quite being done. There's nobody sort of overseeing it. And there, so, we're looking at rewording the contracts and then also possibly changing the contracts to a calendar year instead of your fiscal year. Because the fiscal, the fiscal year starts the contract right smack in the middle of the peak season. And it kind of would be better if it went from January to December because you can kind of ramp up. And they're already on board for the, for the peak season. And Bill didn't think that would be a problem. As you know, we've come up with the policy, the recommended policy for the honorary and memorial benches. And we're starting to explore future funding for parks budget. Trying to come up with some ideas for ways to raise some funds. Let's see. And then one of the other things that we're going to start looking at is other ways that our committee can bring beautification to other parts of town. It seems as though the majority of the parks are in the village. And we focus a lot of our energy in the village. But Rockport is not just the village. And so, we want to take a look at maybe some memorials that are around town and other places to, to bring some beautification. And so, we kind of left the meeting saying if everybody could bring some ideas to the next meeting about where we can, you know, start looking for other ways to beautify the town. So, on this next slide, this is an example, and I'm sorry, it's very small. But it is an example of the assessment forms we did for each, we're doing for each of the parks. And so, each of us individually, on our own time, goes to the park and takes a look at it. The one I've given you is, is Mary Lee. And then when we come to our meeting, we, we sit down and we discuss it. And then I did a master one of, this is everybody's input on one form. So, we came up with what we all felt were the strengths of, of Mary Lee, including the beautiful scenic lookout, the harbor view, the location in the village, the way it's terraced and it's quiet, the hardscape and mature trees. Weaknesses, the trees and shrubs really need pruning and/or thinning. Some of them block the view. So, we're going to be looking at, at taking care of some of that. The opportunities, we're hoping that the bench program will, will between Goodridge Park and Mary Lee Park sort of be where that all starts. The way that it's terraced, we figure that it might be a good concert venue at some point for an outdoor thing associated with the Opera House, perhaps. Maybe an opportunity to do a fundraiser there. And then concerns, we, we already addressed the sign issue because the sign has been moved. And it's obvious now, obvious now where, that it is a park. The fact that there's a lot of cigarette butts left on the trails down there from, I don't know, maybe restaurant workers who are on their breaks, or I'm not sure. But we did, just an aside, we participated in the cleanup Rockport a couple of weekend, a couple of weeks ago. And we were responsible for that stretch of street. And yesterday, I walked my dog down to Nine of June. And between my, between the post office and Nine of June, just on one side of the street, I picked up over 60 cigarette butts, again. So, that is that part. And then I wanted to share with you what's been done at Goodridge Park. It started out with, I think it was Denise, maybe, who, do you want me to talk more into the microphone? I think it was Denise, maybe, who suggested that we get the dead juniper out of there. And so, Mike and his group went there. And when they started to pull out the dead juniper, it was all connected to the live juniper. So, they pulled everything out, which was a little bit of a shock at first. But then we were able to appreciate the fact that the rocks were exposed and that it really had its own beauty. This is a, a view from the south end. And I'm showing you the sign there that we had Adventure Advertising donated sign that was thanking, that's thanking the Plants Unlimited and Anna Remsen and Down East, Down, Seasons Down East Landscape Design for donating the plants. This is just another view that gives you a little bit more perspective. So, we removed all the gravel at the bottom and grassed it in. And then this is where all the juniper was. And the rocks are exposed now. And we put some barberry and native, and ornamental grasses in. And we've had lots of positive feedback. Initially, people were kind of shocked, but the more they've seen it and the more they've looked at it and kind of, can kind of appreciate the, the beauty of the rocks, they've, they've really been positive about it. We also had them, I went down and scrubbed the bench because it had a lot of algae on it. And we had them move the bench under the tree. And I see people sitting there all the time. And that's sort of where we're hoping maybe our first bench will go. And trying to figure out how to advertise that and get people to buy into the bench program. And that's it. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
That's great. You guys have done a lot of great work, and we really appreciate it. It's a great committee. Great leadership.
So, you'll see that there are some motions here that obviously are going to have to be talked about, but at least gives us a place to start.
Doug, can you just put that, so it goes back to the?
Yeah, I don't know how to do that. Then you have to use the machine.
Up here.
Takes a village.
So, my first motion here just involves that the concept drawing of the whole Rockport Library Site Plan with Memorial Park. You know, I don't think we've ever approved that as a committee, you know, and said, okay, this is what we're doing. So, my motion is going to be changed a little because this isn't quite right. I move that the board approve the concept drawing of the Rockport Public Library Site Plan and Memorial Park Site Plan dated May 2019, with the plan scheduled to be determined by the Parks and Beautification Committee.
Should I second it so we can discuss?
Whatever you want to do.
Because I have a few comments, but I?
You can second it.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I wondered, because you've already shown us changes to that concept drawing that you guys are still working on.
Oh, that's true, yes. That's a good point.
And I'm not sure that the Select Board needs to be involved in all the changes that you might make. I guess I don't really, for me, I'm, I would defer to the Parks and Beautification Committee and the liaison, the two liaisons we have on that committee to make those kinds of decisions.
Isn't one of the changes an unknown funding possibility with the walkway from Union over to Lime Rock? Whether it's crushed stone or bricks we sell or concrete? I mean, that's an unknown funded. So, I, I don't know how we can necessarily approve something yet.
Well, the whole thing is.
Isn't civil?
Having any money?
Yeah.
For Memorial Park.
So, that makes me?
Well, it's a concept. And so, you know, is this the direction we want the people to be going in?
Right.
The town to be going in?
Right, and understanding that the funding is a separate issue.
Yep, if you stick with the concept, that's a little redundant there, sorry. But the concept drawing itself, do we buy into the concept drawing? Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that's, that's what you want to get out of this motion.
Yep, correct. Because that's never been done. The Select Board has never said, yeah, you know, this is headed the right direction.
It's directionally correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, in your motion, though, Doug, you're saying the Rockport Public Library Site Plan and Memorial Park Site and Memorial Park Site Plan, is that what you said? So you're talking about both where the library, the plan that we went through where the library sits as well as the Memorial Park.
Two different motions, all right? The second one takes care of the library portion of it?
Well, that's what I wondered.
Get it bunched into one motion.
Well, he wanted, yeah, he added the Memorial Park Site Plan.
Yeah, this is, this is what I'm talking about right now.
Yep. That we're conceptually, just from a discussion standpoint, because I mean, I am aligned with that-
Concept.
Concept.
Right.
Which is what you're asking for in this, is for the select board to vote as to whether we're aligned with that concept or not.
As amended and explained tonight, right?
And maybe more in the future.
We didn't get into, for this motion, we don't need to get into retaining wall adjustments and-
Right.
Yeah, because we're just looking at the overall-
We're just looking at top-down.
My plan is, as this evolves and recommendations come through, I'm going to want Keith to update the drawings to reflect where we are. Get rid of the retaining wall, get rid of this.
But you're not going to constantly do that, it'd be too expensive and, you know, I mean, periodically you're going to do that, right?
Periodically, yeah. And then it, you know, it'll come back to the select board again and say, okay, here's, you know, the next iteration. But we need to start somewhere. And that's what I'm looking for is an approval to say, yeah, this is in the ballpark. You know, not that we have tennis courts over here, you know, this is what we're starting from.
As you stated in the motion, I'm good with it.
No, thumbs up, we're ready.
All right, so we're ready, ready for a vote then. We have a motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Doug?
Doug.
Can't raise your hand, Doug.
Okay, five zero.
Okay, so then the next motion addresses the grade that I showed you over on the young side of the property, which is the eastern elevation grades. And I would move that the board approve the drawings of September 5th for the eastern elevation grades with the composition of the stone wall and plant schedule to be determined by the Parks and Beautification. So, you know, again, it's these ladder drawings here. I mean, you guys are basically okay with those elevations up to the building and-
Yeah, and my only, I would, like, the terracing, I really like that idea and I wouldn't want to get locked out of not being able to do it if we can eventually find funding for it. But that's different than a concept and different than, I mean, the elevations are all going to be the same, it's just before we plant the grass.
Right.
Um, I don't, I don't-
We don't have a motion.
Did you make the motion or are you?
No, he's just discussing it.
Okay, we don't have a motion or a second. Okay.
Is it okay to, or should I wait for a motion to discuss?
Go ahead and make a motion, somebody.
I did.
Oh, you're calling it the motion? Okay.
Okay, do you have a second?
Do we have a second? Okay. Any further discussion?
Okay, I mean, the grades are what they are.
Well, that's not entirely true. You know, they're, they're in there with heavy equipment moving stuff around and so like Denise says, there could be terraces, whatnot, but to a certain extent they are. But it's, nobody again has ever looked at this plan from the architect, the landscape architect and said, okay, that's the one we want.
Those grades are partly why we hired Keith.
Yes.
We needed to get those grades figured out.
I mean, does the board sort of get where I'm trying to go with this? I mean, you know, the Parks Committee is spending a lot of time talking about this, you know, looking at pros and cons, oh, this should be mulled, this shouldn't be. But we need to have the select board sort of say, yeah, this is roughly-
I'm waiting for a vote.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're there, first and second.
Well, everybody's sort of looking at me like-
Okay.
Somebody call a vote?
All right, okay. All those in favor? Okay, five zero.
I move that the board accept the donation of two sugar maple trees from Erickson Preserve to be used by the Parks and Beautification Committee. We can get them free, not sure what we'll do with them yet.
Do we know what, okay, this is discussion now, do we know which park they're going to go in or?
There, there was originally some talk of planting them-
Yeah, we don't have-
Along Union Street here.
Gotcha.
Sugar maples would look nice along there. But we have a donor who's willing to spend a little bit of money, we may be able to put in more mature trees, but we would just like to take possession of the maple trees.
Yeah. I didn't mean where, I didn't mean where in the park they were going to go. I guess I was just asking, are these for Memorial Park as opposed to Mary Lee Park or?
To be honest, we're not quite sure of that.
Okay, so it's just accepting the donation of the trees?
And I'm going to be the thorn again because I think we, in some senses, I think the committee had already voted up here when we met to accept the trees from Erickson's before the board had said, yeah, let's take them. So that's what I'm saying about committees-
Yeah.
Not necessarily, I mean, I think it should have gone to us with a recommendation from them and, yep, okay, there's your trees, go ahead.
Well, that's what, yeah, and I'm sorry, you know, it may have been phrased wrong, Mark, at the meeting, but you can talk to Hunani. I am very sensitive that everything that that committee does is a recommendation to the board.
I'm just saying, the committee took a vote up there to accept the trees as a donation.
And to recommend to the board that they accept it. And here we are.
Well, it's, we're just reiterating that recommendations are made by the committees to the board, so I think that message is clear.
Are we in discussion still?
We are.
Okay, well, are we going to, every bush, every flower, every plant, are we going to have to approve the donation?
I, I would, I would say no. I don't want to be doing that because I'm already doing it once. You know, we have citizens from Rockport who have volunteered their time and effort and I think they come up with good ideas. Now, if something gets done that we don't like, yeah, you know, we'd have to overturn it.
I see it as something that, along these lines, or whether it's painting the fence or doing whatever, it's something the manager can take in and weigh whether he needs to have our input or not. It doesn't need to go to us, but as long as there is a proper procedural-
And that's actually, we've talked about that, Doug and I have talked about, or Denise and I, somebody, I don't recall, but about having a policy, if you will, for the committees that say, here's where their parameters are. And so, you know, we can-
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I think we're going to develop something.
Yeah, and we're going to develop that so that can come to the board and so you can say that very thing, you know, that the manager has purview over certain things and other things may want to come to the board. So we will be working on that to make your time more efficient and the committee's time also more efficient and effective.
But at least for right now, we have a motion and a second, do we not?
Yep.
On the table for the donation of the two sugar maples. So any further discussion or let's vote? All those in favor? Okay, five zero.
Doug, let me help you out. I move that the board approve the removal and pruning of shrubs in Mary Lee Park as determined by the Parks Committee, Parks and Beautification Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, but wait, how much are we going to prune?
Five zero.
Sorry, I couldn't help it.
Touch the hydrangeas.
Don't touch, it's interesting- Are we pruning two inches or three inches off? It's interesting sitting there listening to people, Sajidana, who knows a lot about plants, saying why. I mean, it's just, you have good people on there.
Right. And it's a great committee and they know what they're doing and it's great.
We're lucky.
When it, when it gets to donations, I mean, we just need to figure out the right answer here because the select board, I really don't want to be approving every single rose bush donation-
Right.
Individually over the course of the next six months. We've got to come up with a way where there's-
It's a dollar value or whatever.
Or, I mean, I globally approve all donations right now.
We'll make it happen, but-
Throw the manager's way and let him filter it back if he thinks he needs to. The watchout is either, is too many donations where you've got more plants and trees and things than-
Right.
Or the wrong types that, so there's a lot that the manager can do here.
Yeah.
And then bring it back to us if there's an exception as opposed to-
Yep, I agree.
Every single, but we do have a habit of approving donations. The select board can come up with a motion to approve all planting donations to the library project.
Or to the parks or whatever you'd like to do. Yeah, you could, you could do something along those lines.
Well, that'll be part of what-
The policy, should we just-
Policy.
Let's wait.
Let's wait till we have a real policy. Okay. Okay, moving on. Thank you, thank you, our beautification committee. Thank you, Hunani. Thank you, Doug. And Mark. Okay, next item is accept shore and harbor grant. Bill?
Yes, Bill Napower applied for this grant previously this year, basically for funding for engineering services to do with the harbor and Harbor Park. It's a $15,000 grant to develop engineering plans for erosion control, rebuild the existing wharf, engineering assessment of the existing wood piles along the harbor seawall, development of a dredging plan for a portion of the harbor at the outlet of the Goose River, and to develop a plan to increase parking to serve the harbor. So the match for the grant from the town is $6,000 in cash and in kind. And we can use a portion of our harbor reserve accounts at this point to get the engineering project kicked off and then budget for the remainder in FY '21. The end of the contract is December of next year, so we'd have a full six months in the next fiscal year to be able to include our share of the match as well.
How much is in the reserves?
Oh, there's $57,000 or so.
Oh, so there's not, they would have to be budgeted for then?
Yeah, they're, the reserves are, the reserves are for floats and the like.
Roof on the harbor building. Yeah, and there's a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, there's several others, right.
Needs to be done, so I don't want to spend-
Right.
All of the money.
No, and my, my goal would be to use some of that funding in this fiscal year from the reserves and then put that back in as part of the budget process so that we would budget for $6,000 to refill what we used in the reserves to take advantage of this grant. And the idea behind, the concept behind this grant is that we do the engineering and then we apply for a grant to actually do the work is the second step there.
So it's $6,000 cash or in-kind services?
Yes.
So we could actually have some of our highway guys perhaps help out down there.
Doing some certain things.
Right, which, you know, if that's feasible.
Yes. There's not a lot they can do with the engineering and that sort of thing, but they can do-
Material stuff or-
Little things they can, they could certainly do, or we could use our planner, for instance, for doing some of the initial work.
So that might help offset some of that money.
Yes, yep, yep, no, that's been discussed.
I certainly want to make sure that the building gets the proper maintenance before we, yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And again, it's just a matter of, I identified the float reserve alone has $57,000 in it. And then there's the building reserve that has some additional money in it. But again, the plan would be to reimburse whatever is we use within the next budget cycle.
And move the board accept the shore and harbor grant as presented. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero. The next item is a discussion item, discuss donation for alternate one design for the library lower level.
All right, question on this one. This is a discussion item, only at this time, there's no-
There is potential action as well. It's discussion.
Potential action as well?
Potential action, yes.
Okay. All right. Discussion?
Yeah.
Sorry?
We're in discussion.
Yeah, well, I thought that perhaps Bill would present for those watching.
Yes, so, and I, I had to come up to speed on, on all this too, so the library director can certainly help me out here, or Doug or others. But when, when the library project was put out to bid, the plans had an alternate one for contractors to bid on for the lower level, which basically just had some, some walls moved, had some additional lighting, or the better lighting throughout the lower part of the building and better flooring throughout the entire part of the lower level to make a more comfortable space, if you will, in that lower level. I did include the plans in there. The plan that is on our poster board, which I did not bring tonight, basically shows where some shelving would be in the lower level and that sort of thing, and some tables and just to give an illustration of what it might look like for that space. Since then, we've had a donor come forward that basically would like to see that alternate one built with a couple of changes, moving doors here or there to increase storage space for chairs and that sort of thing, to increase the program area, if you will, the seating area.
But let me just add, I think the one thing for those people who are watching, I think that you might have left out, Bill, is that while that was sent out in the bid, the alternate one, it was not made part of the construction contract, right?
Right, yes.
Because it exceeded the amount that we had budgeted for the library.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And so this donor now has come forward and would like to, to allow that, have that alternate one built out, as you just started to say-
Yes.
And is willing to pay for it.
Yes. And we don't know what the cost is yet for that, but they didn't want to spend a lot of time figuring out what the costs were going to be if the board was not agreeable to having that alternate one constructed.
Let's have a motion in a second before we get too far along. I mean, if, Bill, if you're done.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, I make a motion that the board approve construction of alternate one for the lower level of the library contingent upon a donation to fund this additional construction.
My second.
Okay, discussion?
All right, a couple of things. The alternate one, Ben, was originally in the original plan-ish, correct?
Yes, the alternate one was-
It was, it was, it was, our first round of this included alternate one.
Yes.
We stripped it out because of funding-
Funding.
In order to get ourselves down to target. So really what we're doing here with alternate one, if it's approved, is going back to essentially what we had originally intended a year ago.
Yeah, with, there are modifications. I mean, but, but they're not, they're not intrusive.
No, it's a door here, it's a door there.
Yeah, it's a door here, it's a hallway there, it's sort of a closet here, layout things. And then it is including a boiler, I believe, we're going to look at, including the boiler to hook up-
Potentially, right.
To potentially, we've got to look at all the, the funding, but it's to look at installing a boiler to heat the in-floor, the radiant floor heating in the lower level and in the children's room, which the pipe is all laid for, so it's really just getting a boiler in there as well. Yeah.
So alternate one, if, just capture the big bullets, alternate one will now include what?
So alternate one, it basically makes the program room really nice. It makes it bigger, we can seat more people there, and it just turns it into a really, really nice program room.
And the better lighting throughout the-
Yeah, yeah, and it's better, it's better finishes.
But you talked about shelving closets, what, what else is in that alternate one package?
Um-
That's pretty much it.
The shelving was already there, it's just getting moved.
Well, the shelving was there, it was sort of on the other side of the wall, and that's going to go into the storage unfinished space. So it's not, I mean, there's, there's, in the little swoop out, they're going to put a, before it was sort of a full closet room, now they're going to make it a smaller closet. I mean, do you want me to go over the plan specifically? Oh, okay.
No, no, just what, what would we be installing? What's going to make, whatever the number is here, however much money this is, what's included in that?
A-
The cost of alternate one is some number.
Yeah, yes. We don't know what that number is.
No, but-
But let me, this may help, but, but is, is what we're talking about all reflected in this plan, one plan that we have attached here?
It's a floor plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and is it reflected in there?
No, not, not fully. What would need to happen would be that if the select board gives a nod to sort of go ahead, then the idea is to work with the donors, work with the architect, actually say, okay, this works for the library, for the donors, doesn't mess up the budget, and it's in a price range that these donors are willing to pay for. it's in a price range that these donors are willing to pay for.
And, and, and is that, does that donation include the extra work of the architect? I mean, keep in mind, we have got to make sure that we're not talking about any additional costs, whether it means additional costs by engineer or architect or whatever, because we have to be very careful with those off costs.
And Fi is willing to do it as a separate contract. It will not be an owner requested change order under the current contract, it's going to be a separate deal.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Well, so what I'm hearing is we don't know what's in alternate one in terms of specifics nor cost.
Yes and no. I mean, we have the, we have the outline, we know what we want to do, we have to sit down and, and actually go, yes, this is, we're going to check this off. So, the way it's worked is that a donor has come with this plan, the architect and myself have not sort of massaged it and vetted it through with them, and there are some small changes that we need to move and like say, oh yeah, you know, there's not a door in your plan right there, but it would be, we need a door there because otherwise when people go to the bathroom, you're going to hear the doors of the bathroom open. It's small things like that.
And the, and the architect and the engineers aren't, they don't want to, it's kind of the chicken and the egg, because they don't want to, they're not going to do any more work on the design until the board says, yeah, that makes sense to be able, a donor pay for this type of thing. But they're very small changes to, from this plan, meaning if you see the, the door that goes to the utility room and the back storage room area, if you will, that, that moves so that it's past the utility room.
Yeah.
So, it's, so it's things like that, and then a closet would be created there.
And that really wouldn't have a significant cost impact because you're just moving a door that you are going to pay for anyway. It's just now it's in the center of the wall instead of on one end or...
So, Bill, you're saying it's largely, the majority is reflected in this plan that we have in front of us, but for those few small tweaks, changes.
Right. And you don't see in the plan, obviously, the, you know, the better lighting throughout the lower level.
Right.
The, the main program room has that upgraded lighting and the upgraded flooring, but then the donor would provide that throughout the lower level. All of the better lighting and all of the better flooring throughout the lower level.
My question goes back to the funding portion of that. Who's going to get the money? Is it going to the foundation to dole out? The town to dole out?
It would go...
Or the library to dole out?
It goes, it would go through the foundation as a donation for that purpose, and it would be earmarked for that purpose.
I think, have there been other things that have been donated for that may or may not happen? That's what I'm trying to make sure.
That may or may not happen.
Well, maybe the patio.
Well, we did get one donation that, you know, is getting spent down, but nobody knew what the exact amount was going to be for that work, and, and it may or may not all get spent, we don't...
From my understanding, there have been earmarked donations for certain aspects of, in the library.
Mark, would we call that as a restricted donation? It can only be used for that purpose.
And this, and this is above and beyond the amount that you'd already agreed to bring in, you know, the $2 million, so this is, you're still going to...
Yeah, this is new money on top of...
I know, I know, I'm just...
No, it's good clarification.
Yeah, I mean, the way that I look at it is, is if we can pull it off, it's sort of outside what we're all doing, and it's a really big bonus.
And it finishes off that lower level to a much better standard than what the town could have afforded in the budget, so...
But the, the actual scope of work has yet to be defined.
Yes, so when they...
Cost estimate has yet to be defined.
There is a range right now, so when they bidded out the alternate one, I believe that there was a cost range between the people who came back with the bids for that between something like 20 and 40 grand.
All right.
So, we've got sort of a broad brush range.
So, we're talking 25 to 50 grand versus 100 to 200 grand versus 200 to 250, okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's the, the broad range that we know. It could be more, it could be less, we, it'll, it'll depend on the scope of those little changes that we do.
And the donors know that, you know, those bids were originally for the alternate ones, and they're, they're comfortable within that range, but the, the architect really can't do any, make any changes to the plans because we're not, the town is not saying to him, yes, we're going to spend money on you to make some changes to the plan to determine how much that would cost for the donors.
We're not spending money.
We're not going to spend the money.
That's right.
The donor is going to spend money.
So, that's why we're coming to the board for discussion and hopefully approval to say, or not, to say yes, move forward or, or no.
Okay, so I'm going to ask a series of questions, and it's to capture it for all eternity. The contractor seen this proposal and are they supportive?
Yes.
Has the owner's representative seen this proposal and are they supportive?
Yes.
Has the architect seen this proposal and are they supportive?
Yes.
And has the library foundation seen this proposal and are they supportive?
Yes.
And has the select board, the two select board liaisons to the project seen the proposal and are they supportive?
Yes, I do want to say that originally, when I saw this, I was a little skeptical, I'll be honest. But as we walked through it and, and looked at it, it seemed to make more sense to me. And then just in the last day or so, actually up at the site, if you, now that the walls are up and some of the steel beams are going across, our original program room was surprisingly small. I was really sort of taken aback by how small it was, and so all of these things coming together with the idea of having the program room made larger with nice lighting and nice flooring, I'm, I'm, I'm behind it completely now.
Would, would anyone, the motion maker, would they consider changing a portion of the motion to include just past contingent upon a donation to, and then inserting the foundation fund, or some wording there about to indicate that the donation's to go to the foundation, not, not to the town? So, I mean, I, I don't want to have all of a sudden things start going along and somebody says, okay, I'm not going to pay for it, but yet there's no real clarification of where the money's going to be coming from. I mean, is that something that's, I don't want to get too nitpicky, but I want to make sure that we...
The donation, we ought to state in the motion that the donation goes to the foundation.
And I, I believe that's the intent of the, the donor as well, that way for tax purposes, it's easier for them to go through the foundation than the town.
So, you could easily put after donation the words "to the library."
Something to indicate that it's going there from the donor.
And I'd like to put in at the end, including any architectural, engineering, or other...
Any additional cost.
Other, any other costs associated with this.
Yeah. And just say this additional construction and other associated costs.
One other thought, just again to get on the public record too, there was some question about revising that curved art wall that you see there, but I feel strongly that that should be preserved in the design feature, and so you'll see that this is alternative one, that indeed that is preserved and it's not part of this modification.
So, Doug, did you, did you amend your, did you change your motion or?
Denise made the motion.
You need somebody, whoever made it down there.
No, I didn't, I just showed you what to read.
Doug, there you go. There you go.
Yes, I'll amend the motion to say donation to the Rockport Library Foundation.
And?
And?
To fund this additional construction.
And to fund this additional construction and other associated costs.
Is that good enough?
Anything else you want me to say?
I second the amended motion.
Thank you. And clearly the live stream will indicate what we meant, that we include architectural, engineering, anything, any costs.
Yeah, and that's understood anyway by the donors, but it's good to make it clear.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? That's five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
Good, thanks, Ben. And thank you, donor.
Yes.
The future meetings and office closures are in the agenda, we don't need to go through them.
Can I make one comment?
Oh, yes, sure.
Sorry. The November 12th meeting, I know that we'll only have three select board members present, so there was a suggestion that we move that to November 4th, which, you know, at first glance, there wouldn't be a lot of time between your October 28th and your November 4th meeting. At the same time, there's enough that's, that's bubbling up and coming to, to items to bring to the board, so we certainly could do that, but I wanted to bring that up to the board simply...
What if you, what if we didn't have the October 28th meeting and just had one on November 4th and did it all there?
That's election, made before election, I think, here.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. And I certainly wouldn't, I, I certainly, if the, if the board chose to go to November 4th, I certainly could make, take notes for the minutes so that Linda would not have to be here for that.
I'd have a conflict on the 4th.
Okay, well, that takes that off the board then.
Or Denise runs the meeting.
Or Denise runs the meeting.
True.
With four of us. I mean, it...
Four versus three, you know, we, we have a quorum for the, for the regular meeting, so I'm not sure why it's necessary to change it.
But it wasn't necessarily necessary, Madam Chair, I was just asking if there was an opportunity where five members could be versus three.
Yeah.
So, where we wouldn't have five on the 4th?
Right.
It's really up to the board.
Our, our second meeting is...
You will not have a second meeting in November.
Well, I'm talking about October.
Okay.
Our second meeting is an optional meeting on, on October 28th. The first meeting is a regular SLUG Board meeting.
Correct.
When I, my proposal would be that we eliminate the optional meeting and have one meeting on the 4th that takes the place of our, or is our regular SLUG Board meeting on the 4th.
Which I don't really like to see because I think there's a number of things that are coming up at the October 28th meeting that I would like to be present for, and that means that I'm not present for, in essence, two, two meetings worth.
There, there is a full agenda for the October 28th meeting, certainly is, and, and all five of you are here for, for that date, correct?
Yep.
Which would be good.
Well, I don't, I, I don't have any preferences, I mean, I'm around for all of it except later in November, so if you can take me off the table, I'll show up.
And November 12th, I mean, I, I understand that Mark won't be here, but I won't be here either, so I'm fine with not being here. I'm one of the members that can't be here on November 12th.
We've got a lot done when there's only three of us.
Yeah.
Hopefully, nobody gets sick.
Stick with the schedule.
Stick with the schedule.
Yeah.
Stay, okay, I just wanted to bring it up just for discussion.
Yep.
So, and please keep in mind that the, the second meeting in November, there's only two of you available, so there will not be a second meeting in November, which is the week of Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So, we'll get that out there right now.
Okay. Okay, SLUG Board liaison reports. Who wants to start?
The Conservation Commission met the other day, they talked about their five-year planning and the progressive funding of that for certain projects, whether it's tree-related, you know, with the brown-tailed moth or any other type of infestation. They talked about the request for a tree donation money, and keep in mind that their, their budget isn't all spent yet, but come next spring, they will be spending a fair amount of their budget in pre-planned items. And I didn't get a great warm and fuzzy feeling about them wanting to take money from their pre-planned items to plant a tree. I think one of the comments was, well, they had a nice tree down at the harbor that they decorated until they cut it so that they could put a tent down there. So, that was one of the comments. So, I didn't get a real warm and fuzzy feeling about that, but, and the Parks meeting was pretty much gone over by Doug.
Since you brought that up, I, I know, you brought up brown-tailed moth, and I know, you know, we discussed brown-tailed moth at the time of the election, and I know Bill had, had had more experience in his prior position with brown-tailed moth than we've had here, so I'm hoping that at some point, we're going to have a discussion on brown-tailed moth, what we do about it, what the associated costs are going to be, and, and to build those into our budget.
Yeah, and there will be discussion about that, and I'm, I'm actually working with the Camden Town Manager and perhaps others to maybe have a, a public informational meeting about brown-tailed moths with state officials coming down in, in concert with the Conservation Commission it would be. And they're also looking at doing, because there's another pest that's out there.
Yeah.
The ash war.
The ash war, which is what the board will learn about at your meeting on October 28th.
I was going to say, wasn't that the October 28th?
Yep.
And that's one of the reasons I want to keep that date.
And they, they did talk about, you know, for instance, treating certain areas and trees, like down at Walker Park, you know, they wanted to pick an area and try to treat it because they know that it's quite expensive, you know, to treat trees. So, that's why I said, well, you know, present your five-year plan with however much money you need, because I think at the time, we're going to be more receptive to these types of treatments and money requests, you know, so just be prepared.
Yes, and then, of course, that goes hand in hand with the pesticide policy that the town has, so that, that has to be addressed as well, if you're looking at any type of treatment, so.
Do you have anything else, Mark?
And the ambulance thing's coming up, a meeting is happening Thursday.
The Yemex Performance Review.
Right. Thursday after the ZBA meeting in the Richardson Room. Six thirty.
Six thirty, yep.
I have no updates since our last meeting.
Library Committee meets Thursday, Planning Board, there's nothing particular going on there. Finance Committee, I've lost track of, do you know, Bill, is there a, our annual meeting with Bar Harbor Banking and Trust coming up?
I know Megan has been trying to work on dates for that.
Okay, I thought I'd lost it, but, okay.
No, she's having trouble getting them scheduled, so.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Let's see, Legacy Rockport meets next week, so no updates there. Opera House Committee, we've talked about the fees, that was gone over with the Opera House Committee as well, and I think other than getting the air conditioning and the heating system all sorted out with the computer, computer system, that's in the works. Zoning Board of Appeals meets Thursday for the final decision on the library building permit appeal.
Then Midco Solid Waste, I don't have anything new to report there. Okay, the next thing is executive session.
I move that the SLUG Board convene an executive session pursuant to 1 MRS Section 405-16 to discuss a legal matter.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five to zero.